I'm Mayor Kevin Schilling and calling the special meeting of the Burian City Council to order on February 12th, 2024. The time is 6:00 PM. This hybrid meeting is being conducted in person at Burian City Hall and virtually via Zoom webinar. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I know it's a special meeting and we wouldn't normally do this for a special meeting, but is there a way to get the Native Land acknowledgement on the screen so we can just do that as we've done it with regular meetings?
Yes, just one moment.
Thank you. While we're waiting for that, can we do roll call?
Certainly. Give me a second. Mayor Kevin Schilling.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Stephanie Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Hugo Garcia, sorry. Councilmember Linda Akey.
Present.
Councilmember Jimmy Mata.
Present.
Councilmember Sarah Moore. And Councilmember Alex Andrade.
Present.
Two are absent.
Thank you. I received a call from Councilmember Garcia that he's still handling some personal matters. Can I hear a motion to excuse him?
Can I make a motion to excuse both council members that are not present today?
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to excuse both Councilmember Moore and Councilmember Garcia. All those in favor, please raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. I'll read the Native Land and People's acknowledgment. "We begin by honoring and acknowledging that this meeting is taking place on the ancestral lands and waters of the many Coast Salish tribal peoples who have, since time immemorial, protected and been in relationship with the Salish Sea and these precious lands we know as Burian and our home. As a government agency that is occupying indigenous lands, it is important that we remember the history of our area and to work towards fixing the injustices that persist. We acknowledge our region's tribal citizens, their descendants, and their ancestors, and we honor their invaluable contributions to this region's community's identity, economy, history, culture, and future." Thank you very much. So we have a special meeting tonight on public safety where we're going to hear a report from Chief Bo and then we're going to move into our seated format in front of us. We're going to be moving into public comment now. Clerk, could we please hear the rules around public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Public comment guidelines are summarized on the screen shortly. And they can be viewed in their entirety in Section 5 of the Council Rules of Order. The deadline to sign up to speak or to submit written comments for this meeting was 5:00 PM today. Community members may state their name and city of residence and speak for two minutes or less. The total time for the comment period is 30 minutes. The order in which comments are prioritized is as follows. First, Burian residents. Second, Burian business owners or their representatives. Third, employees who identify Burian as their home or business location. And at this time, we'll share the public comment list. For those in person, please be prepared to speak at the lectern. And for those on Zoom, please be prepared to unmute yourself. Now at this time, we have 14 community members sign up to speak. And the first person, I believe, is Karen Senkula.
Oh, and before we start, just a reminder, please keep your comments respectful. No cheering, shouting, clapping, snapping, or screaming at anyone or anything. No personal or directed comments to city council members or staff. Please keep this public comment period civil. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, Karen, would you please unmute yourself at this time?
Thank you. Hi, this is Karen Senkula. I'm not entirely sure what public safety issues are going to be spoken about, but with Chief Bo giving a presentation, I really wanted to take the opportunity to bring up what, to me, as a parent and a resident, is one of my biggest public safety concerns and see if this is something that might be addressed in the future, which is the safety of our children and pedestrians crossing streets while they're walking to school. My children cross 8th Avenue South. I know a lot of children that cross 4th Avenue Southwest and 160th, crossing at unmarked intersections, or sorry, unmarked crosswalks or uncontrolled crosswalks. And every year, we're facing drivers that don't obey the school's own speed limits, that speed through these crosswalks during school hours and when children are crossing the streets. I believe last week, there was a student hit at one of our local middle schools. And I hope that the city and the chief can give us some insight as to how we might protect our pedestrians and our children as our population grows and our streets, especially these side streets, get busier with drivers trying to get around the congestion on Ambon and First. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Sydney Moore. Sydney Moore. Oh, thanks.
Hi, my name is Sydney Moore. I'm the president of the Burian Community Support Coalition. I'm here today to talk about our unhoused population out on the streets and ask the city for help. For the last three months, our organization has been successfully operating a supervised homeless camp. Now that camp is closed, we are seeing exactly the situation we had before in our city. People are dispersed around our community with nowhere to go, no safe place to stay, no organized location for them to connect with their case managers or their family members or outreach workers. I'm getting calls every single day from family members and case managers and outreach workers who are trying to find the people who were previously safely located in our camp. Although the city never actually asked us for any information about how we were serving people or who we served, we are more than happy to provide that. For example, we had over 100 residents and served several dozen others. In addition to that, we serve people from ages 12 to 73, including pets. We provided a safe place to stay, but we also helped connect people with outreach workers that got them IDs, phones, put them on wait lists for housing, helped them get medical care, helped them look for jobs. Some people got into shelter or even got into housing. So there were a number of services that were provided, but mainly having people have a safe and stable place to stay is a vital service that we are more than willing to continue providing for the city. We would like you to partner with us. The city could ask the Seattle City Light property to become available in the interim while you continue working on establishing a tiny home village there. You could open up the back of the Annex Park or a tiny plot in the back of Puget Sound Park, or even the upper area of the community center. There are a number of places that people could stay.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Nature. Nature. Okay, next is Brenna. Brenna. Charles Shaffer.
Hi, it's nice to be back. I just want to be clear, I'm speaking for myself, not for an organization. I'm just here to actually call out the hypocrisy of a council that spent the past year actively making it more dangerous to be homeless in Burian, to be having a meeting talking about public safety. If you really wanted to, if you were concerned about public safety, what you would do is repeal the camping ban so our understaffed police department could spend more time going after actual criminals. But I don't really expect you to do that tonight. Play stupid games, you win stupid prizes.
Next is Alex Hale. Alex Hale. Elizabeth Hale. Kelsey Van Hee on Zoom. Kelsey, would you please unmute yourself?
Thank you. I'm calling in tonight to speak about my experience as a volunteer at the Sunnydale encampment. I think that it was a place that greatly contributed to our sense of public safety because it gave people a stable place to live and, as Sydney said, reach out with their, to their case managers or their family. I know many people are aware of a high-profile crime involving someone who resided at Sunnydale, and I just want to say that I think would have been more difficult for law enforcement to find both witnesses and anyone involved in that crime if they didn't have a consistent place to live and that that case, instead of showing why places for the unhoused are dangerous, actually shows why places for the unhoused make us all safer because it allows everyone to be in regular contact with law enforcement when needed. I think that the council and the public often try to design policy that will prevent all crime from happening and make us feel safe. And I think the best way to do that is to reduce inequity and to make housing plentiful and affordable and available to everyone and, short of that, to give people safe places to stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Chastine Edgar.
I sent to the council a graphic that shows the difference between 2018 and 2021, where the police, the number of police available here in King County was significantly down and crime was significantly up. This demonstrates how little the King County Sheriff's Office and the King County Executive care about public safety in Burian. While Burian was receiving 70% of the services that it had contracted for, the other cities, the other contract cities, receiving 90% of their services. This does not show a care or concern for public safety in Burian by the King County Sheriff's Office. King County has continued to bring programs to Burian that it has failed to fund adequately. LEED is one of those, REACH is another one, DESC, Mary's Place. And now, this new $1 million inadequate paltry amount of money that's supposed to be used for a tiny host village, which will not even support the tiny host village's construction or its existence for a year. Again, it's being dumped on Burian by King County, King County, who is too cheap to fund these programs that it brings to us. And King County has had the unmitigated gall during this last year to tell us how we can use the police we contract for to protect public safety in this city. It's unclear. It's unclear exactly what King County is planning for Burian, but it does not care about public safety in Burian. And the only solution, the only real solution, is as soon as possible, this city needs to develop its own police force. While I respect the police in this city, and they have helped me a number of times, they are put in a bad situation that does not protect public safety in Burian. This needs to end. We need to fund our own police force.
Next is Travis Lauricella.
Thank you, Mayor Schilling, council members. I live at Burian Town Square Condominiums across the street. And although I'm president of the Condom owners Association, I speak tonight in my capacity as an individual, not as a representative of the association. I spoke with you last year when we had campers set up tents across the street in the dog park, and at that time provided you with statistics reflecting the number of criminal incidents that our building encountered before and during the two-month camp. I follow up tonight with numbers showing the drop in incidents after the camps were removed and with the numbers we've seen since the campers returned to our block seven days ago. I know you can't see this chart's details from where you're sitting, but I hope you can see the overall trend. If you recall, in early 2023, we averaged three incidents a month. When the campers arrived, we had 25 incidents in April, then 16 in May. The campers left, incidents dropped to an average of three per month over the next eight months, and then with no more than four incidents in any one of those months. We've had eight incidents so far this month, which extrapolates out to 19 for the month, likely more. I understand the legal restrictions we operate under when shelter beds are unavailable. However, neither the ordinance that allows camping nor our constitutional protection of assembly requires private property owners to allow trespassers. Saturday at 11:15 AM, campers were sleeping under shelters propped against our building, clearly crossing the property line between the sidewalk and our building. I reported this to the police and waited outside for three hours for them to arrive. Two hours in, a single police car drove by without stopping and reported dispatch that he didn't see anyone. I gave up on the police an hour later after the trespassers had left. Graffiti, litter, and disquieting wet spots were left behind. Last night, trespassers arrived on our outdoor property off the city sidewalk. Our security service notified police at 11:18 PM. An hour later, we called back, only to learn that the police drove by again and didn't see anyone. We have trespassing laws on the books. As suggested, we have a trespassing letter on file with Burian police. As suggested, we have adequate no trespassing signage. But we had three "we didn't see anyone" incidents in the last 72 hours. And that leads me to believe the police are literally, literally looking the other way.
Next is Pamela Jorgensen on Zoom. Pamela, would you please unmute yourself at this time?
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm a resident of Burian. Was thinking today about this meeting. My random thoughts about my personal safety focus on stopping gunfire on our streets, reducing speeding on our streets, and reducing car prowling and car thefts in our neighborhood. But of course, most of us are focused now on the homeless situation. Homeless people want to feel safe also. Feeling safe, we know, is difficult when one cannot prevent one's property from being stolen when one feels vulnerable and exposed and lacks access to food or sanitary facilities or healthcare. I think we can work together to improve the conditions for our homeless population and make everyone feel more safe. I hope we can use our resources wisely and fairly so that all of us can feel safe. Feeling safe allows us to make good choices, recover from trauma and physical or mental disabilities, and contribute to our communities. I hope we do not think that forcing homeless people to leave our city is an answer to our public safety concerns. That's not a solution, but a violation of our commitments to our neighbors, as well as being unproductive and harmful. Thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you. Next is Toni Bart.
Hello. I will keep this very brief. I'm here representing 175 people who have signed a petition asking the city's help with an urgent matter of public safety. I'm going to let the petition speak for itself, and I've asked the city clerk to please make copies of it for each and every one of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Daniel Martin.
Greetings, council. Without shelter, people die. We've witnessed one of the deadliest years on record due to the intersecting crises of housing shortage, opioid epidemic, and tainted drug supply, leaving thousands homeless in King County. I'm Daniel Martin. I'm the vice president of the Burian Community Support Coalition. After almost a year of city inaction, we formed a nonprofit and to establish and oversee a sanctioned 24/7 supervised tent encampment at Sunnydale Village. And I've had the honor of my life to serve as the site manager there this winter. Despite our limited resources, we provide crucial support to over 100 individuals experiencing homelessness in Burian this winter, with a final count of 65 permanent residents, five dogs, and one cat as of the time of our camp closing last Monday. We've connected residents with services, including detox and housing programs. We made a tangible impact on their lives. We built relationships with emergency services, caseworkers, medical professionals, faith-based and non-faith-based groups in our community, veterinary outreach, and more, fostering collaboration to address the needs of individuals experiencing homelessness effectively. The city of Burian has enabled harmful sweeps without providing alternatives for its unhoused residents. The city allocates over half its budget to policing, yet police are the most expensive and least effective tool in addressing homelessness. Despite the opposition of some of our antagonists, we believe that Sunnydale Village was a massive success in caring for the unsheltered homeless in Burian throughout this deadly winter. I extend an invitation to city officials to discuss establishing a new sanctioned encampment somewhere in Burian. It's unsustainable to continue saying no without offering solutions. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Next is Darla Green on Zoom. However, Darla is not logged on. So at this time, I believe we've reached the end of the public comment signup list.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on for our special meeting, we are going to begin our public safety discussion, and I believe that's up to you, chief.
Mayor, council, just want to say thank you for inviting staff and chief to provide this information. You will see a presentation pulled together by Chief Bo. I'll hand it off to the chief.
Before you begin, chief, can I just say, so we're going to let you do your presentation, and then I think what we'll do is we'll have questions from the dais, and then after questions, we'll move to our discussion down here. Does that work for you?
You're the mayor. Make it work for me.
You're gonna be careful with that one. Okay.
We have, okay, perfect. First of all, thank you, mayor, council, meeting members. I always appreciate the opportunity to come up here and speak a little bit about the work we're doing in Burian and help have a shared understanding of what we're doing and how we're doing it. And then we can have a discussion around what that looks like in Burian. I have been the chief here since 2018, so a little over five years that I have had luxury in honor of this job. And I also always like to make sure that we recognize that we're all people. So my name's Ted. My wife's a school teacher. Been married, with her for over 25 years, two lovely kids, 14 and 11-year-old daughter. And I share that because everybody up here, council members, city staff, myself, we are all people first, right? We're doing a job and doing the best we can. So I do start with making sure we humanize this work, and we have this discussion from that lens that everybody here is trying to understand this from a human lens. Next slide, please. So tonight, we were asked specific questions from council in preparing for this special meeting. We were asked to provide a case briefing on a specific incident from February 2nd. We were asked to do an overview of the Burian Police Department to provide preliminary crime stats and a summary on the implementation enforcement of Ordinance 818 and 827. I will acknowledge, as many people have, that this is scratching the surface on a big, huge discussion around public safety. And what we're talking about tonight is just a small piece of a much bigger discussion around what public safety means. And that's something I suspect we'll talk about when we move up to the table. Next slide, please. So, specific to the case on February 2nd, just before 9:00, we received a 911 call that there had been a stabbing victim that had come into the Safeway store at 148th and 1st Avenue. One minute after the call arrived, it was toned out on Burian Police Department radio. The first officer arrived within one minute of being advised there was an incident there. The suspect was already gone, fleeing on foot. Officers requested K-9 response, and we had a K-9 on scene five minutes later. We were lucky enough, CTAC had a K-9 on duty, so we got an amazingly fast response. We also had one of our drones available, and we had a request for a drone 11 minutes later with a 10-minute response time to have a drone up in the air. Sorry, 15-minute response time to have a drone up in the air searching for the suspect who had fled on foot. Suspect was suspected to have gotten into a car, K-9 track went a short distance and then stopped. And Major Crimes is the detective agency, was on scene an hour and about, it looks like 29 minutes after the initial call. I point this out to really focus on how fast resources were on scene. Having a one-minute response time to a critical event is almost unheard of. So this was one of those events where everything just worked very well, that the resources were right there, readily available. And some of the resources from our partners were immediately and readily available in the form of canines and drones being available to serve this call. Next slide, please. Some base details about what's known. Our victim in this case is a 40-year-old male. He suffered a cut to his abdomen. He did have surgery. He's out of surgery, stable and recovering. Suspect in this case, an unknown race male who has not been identified as of today. And there's multiple pieces of evidence that were collected for the scene that are sent in for processing. Next slide, please. And a couple updates from the Major Crimes Unit. No suspect has been arrested. The detectives continue to actively collect video from multiple sources, including surveillance cameras and private videos. They're interviewing witnesses and then reviewing and analyzing evidence. Let evidence is sent off to the State Crime Lab and other sources to analyze, get additional information. And as is normal, they provide me regular updates on cases. So they'll continue to provide me updates as this case proceeds. So that's the first question I was asked was just a quick summary of that. That's the amount of depth we'll go into on an active case. There's obviously stuff way on behind the scenes, but until I have more details, I don't typically provide details on active investigations beyond limited scope. Next thing is a little bit about your police department. Turn flip slides. So, police department is a contract with the King County Sheriff's Office. What that means is that all of the officers here What that means is that all of the officers here are employees of the King County Sheriff's Office, and they're fully dedicated to service in the city of Burien. So the city pays 100% of the cost to the officer, and the officer spends all 40 hours of their work within the city of Burien. We work under what's called an ILA or an inter-local agreement, which was last signed in 2001 and automatically renews, and it's one agreement for all partners. So there's a single agreement for all the contract cities in the city of Burien that covers the same general understandings of how we're going to function. So Burien doesn't have its own set of rules and regulations. There's a shared understanding among all the contract partners and a little bit of the control structure mechanism in place. There are a series of boards that work with cities, and the first one is the Oversight Board, which looks at the administrative component of the King County Sheriff's Office, and the city managers for every contract partner sit on the administrative board. There's the Oyster Committee, which is the financial component of the King County Sheriff's Office, and the Finance Director of every contract partner sits on the Finance Board. And then there's the Contract City Chiefs, and that is the operational side, and I sit on the Operational Board, representing the city of Burien's interests on that board. Next slide, please. So within the contract, every city is allowed to do à la carte services. So we get to pick what the council wants to request from the King County Sheriff's Office as far as resources, and then we also have a pool of shared resources. So the first resources list up there are your dedicated FTEs. Those are your officers, detectives, chief captain, the structure of your police department here in the city wearing the blue uniforms. The second piece of that represents the things that we use a portion of King County's greater resources, and we have to pay our portion of those resources. So, for instance, the city of Burien pays for 13.47 people within the communication center at the King County Sheriff's Office. So call receivers, dispatchers, supervisors, we have to pay our portion of that entity, and the way we do that is by paying a portion of the FTEs that we use from King County. So part of the understanding with the contract is that it shouldn't be beneficial, mutually beneficial to each partner, it should be mutually beneficial to both partners, but nobody should benefit unduly. So we have to pay our share of usage. Next slide, please. So when I came to Burien, we spent a lot of time in my first year really kind of figuring out what we wanted to do as far as culture, what we want the culture of our police agency to be, and what we wanted the guiding principles of our officers to be as we build that culture. And we worked with council at the time and city staff to come up with what that looked like for us, and we really focused on three ideas. The first one is this idea of building trust, and that how we do our job has to have a component of trust. Every interaction we have with our community, with our council, with other partners, has to build trust and not take away from trust in the police department and in the city and in representative of all of us. The other one is we have to fight crime. There has to be accountability for criminal behaviors. We have to respond to crimes, actively work on reducing crime, and that understanding that that is a collaborative effort and it's a team sport. Police do not fight crime in a vacuum. Police fight crime as part of a team that involves more than just law enforcement. So as we discuss public safety, as we discuss crime fighting, it's prosecutors, it's jail, it's programs, it's outreach, it's this collective body of work that helps to reduce crimes in our community, not exclusively law enforcement. And the third part is, we have to support each other. We have to take care of our law enforcement officers. We have to provide training for our law enforcement officers. We have to make sure we have adequate resources for our law enforcement officers, and sometimes this manifests even in some of those little things, like making sure they have clear direction. Make sure I give them clear guidance so they don't feel unsupported by me in what they're being asked to do. So that's what, when I view supporting our officers, that's what I think of it as, is how we take care of the men and women who wear this uniform and make them feel safe. Next slide, please. This is how we currently deploy the Burien Police Department officers that are in that à la carte component. We have 27 officers assigned to patrol. Those are the people pushing, driving marked patrol cars around the city. 25 of those positions are full, and actually, I should start out with that. Currently, the King County Sheriff's Office has about 79 vacancies at last count. Part of the contract says that we carry those vacancies proportionally across the entire entity. Burien's fair share of the vacancies right now is six vacancies. So although we contract for 44.8 officers, we actually have 5.8 vacancies in the city, we don't have a full allotment of our officers. So this is the way your officers are currently assigned. 25 of the 27 officers assigned to patrol are full. I do want to showcase, just today, we did the of the year awards for the entire King County Sheriff's Office, and the Field Trainer of the Year is a master police officer on swing shift here in Burien. So quite an honor to have the whole county, the number one field trainer in the county came out of the city of Burien, so I think that's quite an honor for our staff. Thank you. The next unit we have is our SET unit. SET unit are the undercover officers. They're the ones that you're never going to see because they don't operate in the traditional uniform sense, and most of their work is kind of behind the scenes, doing complex investigations. Over the last couple of years, we have really focused their work on interdiction work related to fentanyl and trying to reduce the supply of fentanyl into our city and firearms. Those are the things we want them working on because we believe there's a lot of violent crime tied to the mass distribution importing of drugs into our community. So we have them focusing on that mid-level work related to violent crime, guns, and fentanyl. CID detectives, oh, and three of those are budgeted. We only have two filled at this point. CID are detectives, are our jack-of-all-trades detectives. Those are all your property crimes. Everything that doesn't go to a specialty unit within the county goes to your CID detectives. We have two of those filled right now, so we have two vacancies in CID positions. Burien Crime Reduction Unit and Storefront, those are your multidiscipline officers. They're the ones who run the Explorer Program. They're the ones riding around downtown on bikes. They're the ones doing the walking the streets, Mark Hayden's work. Really, any of the work that we're doing in this downtown core, as well as across the city, that's that proactive work on solving problems, it falls to this unit and this body of work. They're the ones that aren't assigned to the radio as far as dispatch calls for service and have the freedom to work on problem-solving projects as we request. There is four budgeted positions, there are three of which are filled. The next thing is not technically a Burien resource, but it is a Burien resource. So our co-responder unit is actually FTEs from the King County Sheriff's Office. They're not part of your budget as far as you paying for the uniformed FTEs, but we manage the program out of the city of Burien in our co-responder unit. So they wear blue uniforms, drive Burien cars, and are in the city, but they are actually King County-funded FTEs that are working out of the city as our co-responder unit. We obviously have a role in some of the other work around co-responder and funding different pieces, but this specific program is actually funded by King County, and those officers are King County officers that we are managing under the Burien contract. And last, but certainly not least, anybody that knows Metchiko Wilson knows that she is the most amazing community service officer you'll ever meet, and she runs Community Police Academy. She does almost every connection between law enforcement and our community, our businesses, adult protective services, churches. She has connected everything in the city and is truly a gift in bringing together a lot of those community relationships. Even simple things, I had a neighbor complaint the other day where two neighbors are in a dispute over noise in their apartment. She can go handle some of that stuff without sending a uniform officer and work some of those problems in the community. So she is an absolute gift to our community, and I certainly want to share her work. Next slide, please. For this slide, I'm bringing back an old slide, and it appears that I have put enough stuff on there in small enough print that I can say whatever I want to the crowd right now because I can't read it. Oh, there we go. That's a size more appropriate. This is a summary table we've been doing for about the last four years here. It really, what I try to do is often we look at crime kind of in a vacuum because it impacts us, and we look very locally, and we look very, very micro on how we look at it, which is completely appropriate, normal, but I like to kind of move back a little bit and talk about crime in the bigger area. So I pull out all the South County cities, and I look at their crime rate as set to 1,000 residents, that we can speak kind of apples to apples about crime versus the size of the city. And when we look at crime rate on that, that lens, what we find is Burien's crime rate actually kind of falls in the middle. We are not the lowest crime community in South King County. We are not the highest crime community in South King County. We fall in the middle when we actually set it to the size of our population and the size of our city. Now, I will be the first to admit that when crime impacts you, when it's hyper-localized, this number means absolutely nothing to you, and it impacts you directly, and you have a very strong feeling about that, and I fully understand that. I just like to bring this up because a lot of times people don't recognize Burien's not an anomaly in these discussions. These discussions are going across our community. The other thing I will always point out on this is the other thing that we set to 1,000 people is the number of police officers we have per 1,000 residents. We are by a long shot the lowest staff police department per 1,000 residents in South King County. We are well below the state average for police departments and the lowest staff in South King County as the size of our population being a measurement. We also are a very busy city. So what we find when we look at the number of calls for service per police officer, Burien has more calls per police officer than any other community that we partner with as the sheriff's office, so we are the busiest officers among all of our service area. So I just think it's important to kind of capture some of that when we're talking about some of our solutions, is just recognizing, as some people have already mentioned, we are a very busy department with people who are going call to call to call, and not to justify anything, but rather just to say an acknowledgement of the limited resource there. Next slide, please. I normally don't do stats until they've been through WASPIC and come back out for the Crimes in Washington report, but I do want to just give you some preliminary stats because I think they're relevant to the discussion we're having tonight to give you current stats instead of giving you the 2022 or the last year's stats after they've been scrubbed. So I put the big asterisk that these are preliminary stats, and they will change slightly, but a half a percent at the most, it's a fairly small change that you'll find. And stats are always a dangerous thing in law enforcement because stats don't take into consideration that when you're the victim of a crime, that thing is real. You experience something, you have a very emotional reaction to that, and that is 100% the correct thing to experience. Within crime, you have crime statistics and numbers, and you have the fear of crime, the perception of crime within your community, and both of those are part of public safety discussion. You can't fully isolate numbers if people don't feel safe. And if people feel super safe, you can't ignore the numbers. You have to put those two things together. So as I bring forward stats, I want to just fully acknowledge that stats are the numbers not taking into consideration the other half of that, which is that fear of crime component, which is a real thing. So in the state, we break down crimes into three categories. The first category is crimes against persons. These are the standard way of recognizing crimes in the federal systems that all agencies report identically on their crimes across the entire nation in the FBI modeling. So what we see in this is overall a 7% reduction in crimes against persons in the city of Burien in 2023. And some numbers to showcase, assaults are down 13%, and violation of no contacts and protection orders, which largely is tied to domestic violence-related offenses, are down about 22%. Next slide, please. The next category of general stats is crimes against property. Crimes against property in the city of Burien are also down 7% year-over-year, looking at 22 to 23. This is led by reductions in both commercial and residential burglary and larceny. The one anomaly that we continue to struggle with here, and quite frankly, across the entire state, is auto theft. Auto theft is a real challenge across our community, and while there's a lot of drivers for that, that's a discussion probably for a different day and can be a discussion in and of itself. Next slide, please. The last one is what they call crimes against society, and in this case, we actually have a 9% increase in the crimes against society, which in and of itself, if you jump on that, is a cool number, but when you dive into it, it actually shows some great work by your Burien Police Department. So we have had changes in our drug laws and accountability for public drug usage in the last year, and you will see a 65% increase in enforcement of public use of drugs in your community over last year. And the next one, or two columns down, you'll actually see weapons law violations are down nearly 40%. So there's about a 40% reduction in the weapon violations within the city of Burien. Next slide. I just want to showcase some of the interdiction work. I post a lot of this on social media, and I talk a lot about this, but I think putting it all together in one big pot is important when I talk about the work we're doing to reduce the violent crime in Burien and to look at the importation of fentanyl and large supplies into Burien. And these numbers are astronomical. There's 155 pounds of methamphetamine were taken off the streets last year. 49 pounds of fentanyl. Normally, in drug cases, you aren't using numbers that end in pounds, right? That is abnormal, and here you see a list of just some amazing work that they're doing. And really, when we talk about two detectives and start looking at 55 search warrants, you can tell the level of work that goes into these cases to write those warrants. So I like to showcase this unit and really talk about what that looks like when they do some of that work. This is also a case where we get a lot of benefits out of leveraging our resources. We put two detectives into a team that consists of six detectives. So there's four King County assets in that team, but they do all of their work out of my office and focus on South King County, so we really benefit by that partnership and get a real synergistic impact of having two detectives in that team. It also happens to have Quinn, which is possibly the cutest dog you've ever seen. So. Next slide, please. So just a quick touch on the implementation of 818 and 827, which was one of the other questions council asked. Prior to implementing the Burien Mini Code, we started by Human Services coordinating weekly meetings of all the partners to include law enforcement, fire, MHP, outreach, putting everybody in the room and trying to work out what this is going to look like as we move closer to implementation. Those happened several months before the actual implementation date of the bill. We worked with our partners in LEED to amend the LEED criteria to allow for public camping to be a LEED divertable offense. And then on December 1, 2023, we started the enforcement of the ordinance as written. To date, there has been no arrests for violations. There has been lots of warnings, but there has not been arrests. And there is a component of the bill that requires shelter be available to enforce it after 7:00 PM, which is certainly a limiting factor in the ability to enforce the evening component of our statute. Next slide, please. Because I have everybody's attention, I'm going to put a little plug in here for a couple of things. First of all, the Burien Sea-Tac partner to do a Community Police Academy. Our Community Police Academy is coming up this spring. We still have vacancies, and I think 29th of February, if I recall correctly, is the closing date. It's a great opportunity to spend a few weeks working with officers across our department and understanding what goes on behind the scenes, how things happen, how things get done, what are the laws? The prosecutors come in, explorers come in, you go to the jail, you get a detective briefing to see what a major crimes investigation looks like. You get to see the whole department, kind of what happens behind the scenes. I have been doing that program now for about 15 years at different ranks along the way, and I don't think I have ever heard somebody tell me that they didn't find it to be an extremely valuable use of your time, including several of our council members who have been through the program. So shameless plug to say, if you want to know more about your policing and how it works, please come join us. We feed you, I tell bad jokes, and it's a lot of fun. The second thing is Coffee with the Cop. Our next Coffee with the Cop is coming up at the Normandy Park Starbucks on February 27. And for that one, we actually have multiple police departments, so we're going to have Normandy Park, Burien, and Sea-Tac, so we can kind of look at how all of the things impact our collective community. So instead of just being Burien, we're going to look at it a little bit broader and bring everybody into one room at one time. So shameless plug to say, I'll be at both of those, and please feel free to attend both. And with that, I subject myself to whatever questions you may have of me.
Okay, well, like I said, we're going to open up for questions. Please, please limit questions to the chief, and then we'll go to the tables here to have a discussion, so just so we can get more information, if you want more information on anything that he presented here. So any, any initial questions from council on something presented here? Deputy Mayor Morris.
Thank you. I specifically have a question for the stabbing that happened outside of the Safeway. If you're able to answer by chance, do you know where the suspect originated, from where they came from, if they came on foot, or they were a shopper at Safeway, or I don't know?
And my pause is not because I don't know, it's because I don't want to step on an active investigation. I can tell you that it did originate with a vehicle. It's not an on-foot scenario. And suspect fled on foot, but by all accounts, it appears based on the K-9 track that he had another mode of transportation.
Councilman Reiki.
First of all, thanks.
First of all, thank you, and I want to preface my comments by saying that, um, I've spoken with thousands of residents and. There is a great amount of respect in this community for the Beryan Police Department and the work that you do. And I thank you for that. And, uh, just a plug that that. That course he was talking about, it's amazing. Please, please sign up. It's so good. Um, I attended a year ago. And it was really fantastic. Um, questions. I have a few questions in two different areas.
One at a time.
One at a time. Okay. So I have, uh, a, a picture here of, um. What we had, um, one of our residents speak about during public comment today. And this is centered around, um, the public safety aspect of the trespassing. This particular picture shows. Blockage of a fire egress from the condo units. And, uh, open drug use. So those were the two things. Um, and the association utilizes a off-site or the condos. Nation utilizes an off-site, um, security, uh. Company. They don't have a anyone present physically here, so they call in. So the, the question on this is, I understand the challenges of having limited officers for things that are happening. And how can we, um, protect, um, residents in situations of trespass, um, as well? Uh, understanding that, you know, it takes, like, on Saturday, it was a three-hour response time, um. And, uh, a comment from an officer directly to me about, you know, if those things are happening, you can ask them directly to leave, but there's not a comfort level in doing that in some of these cases. So. Can you speak a little bit to? The enforcement of trespassing and the expectations that community members can have towards these kind of, um. Situations when I know that there's other important things going on, like stabbings, other, you know, stabbings and car accidents and. Shootings and, you know, all of that that you have to balance. Um, what can residents? Do further to be able to manage through that and also expect of the police department?
Sure. Um, almost starts by saying, I, I think we've had a pretty good relationship over the years with condo association. I think we've done a lot of work collectively. So I. Want to start out by saying, I think it has been a collective effort to really work on a lot of these issues. Clearly trespassing is a violation of state law. Uh, if somebody is asked to leave, refuses to leave, uh, they can be arrested for that. So I think that's something that is actionable. I think that somebody blocking a fire escape is clearly actionable. Some of the drug stuff does require, uh, being witnessed by an officer. So it's saying somebody used drugs four hours ago is not actionable. So there's, there's pieces that are actual pieces that are not. It also is a matter of clearly defining your condo had an interesting thing where they own like a foot outside or two feet outside. I will be honest, I'm not sure that I would expect every officer to know which buildings own two feet of what appears to be public sidewalk and don't. That is probably not a level of detailed understanding. I would expect most officers to know. Fire door being blocked, I would expect officers to be pretty clear that that's not an acceptable conduct. So. I think working together is one of the things. I think the more that, uh. People take responsibility for their own property, which I think is probably what the officer was saying is it's okay to ask somebody to leave. It's okay to hire private security to enforce the rules of your private property. And I think a lot of times that works very well to supplement with law enforcement. Is somebody viewing a video from out of state and calling nine-one-one, uh, repeatedly, it builds up a lot of calls for service, but it also probably is not. Always the most effective, uh, use of our resources. So. To be transparent, as we're balancing our resources, that is part of it. Now. I would counter and I would guess you will as well, that if they had. Taken action on the first call, there wouldn't have been the three additional calls. So I I will fully counter that as well as a reality. So. It's kind of a long answer to say some of it's actionable, some of it's not. And I really think the best thing we can do is continue the collaborative work we've done. If you look at the chart, you'll see, uh, anomaly in the most recent, but we actually had a lot of really good success in the work we've done. With your condominium association and. That particular problem. So and we'll continue that. I have an email from the vice president, I think, that I haven't had a chance to respond to yet.
Yeah. And, and it's not just the condo, but, you know, trespassing in general. So that's helpful. Thank you.
That's a good, um, uh, segue to a question I want to ask about the relationship between. Beryan Police and private. Security groups. I'm more thinking about like Safeway and the grocery stores because a lot of people ask me like, well, why aren't the city police? Doing something about Safeway parking lot? And I know that there's different ownership of different places and first example, the Safeway situation. So, uh, could you explain that relationship and sort of, um. Who's responsible for what on a property that's private like Safeway? And then make, and one of the things I'm going to ask us to do tonight is recommend. Ask for recommendations on maybe what codes or, or, um. Municipal laws we can actively improve to make that clearer or try to be better partners with those. With those private properties, but I'm just curious if you can touch on that a little bit.
Yeah, I, I think one of the things that's really important to understand with private properties is a lot of people have an expectation for law enforcement to enforce private property rules. As opposed to laws. And I, I think that that is something that often we run. Into a little bit of a rub with some of our private property owners is they want us to en- enforce how they manage their property. And I think it's important that property owners. Are the primary person responsible for the management of their property and we supplement that. With the use of trespassing ordinances or obviously enforcement criminal law is our job. But I think often it gets a little muddy because people want us to. Enforce their rules, but they don't take their responsibility for their portion of enforcing the rules. And I think that's where that, that relationship can be bettered is when you see security. Private companies working with law enforcement, uh, so that, uh. They're working collaboratively to resolve the problem instead of expecting law enforcement to come in and solve the problem. And be the one to manage their property. And and I hope I'm. Being fair in how I'm saying that, but I think that is a rub that we get into a lot of times is. Over reliance on law enforcement to solve non-criminal offenses.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a clear, um, analysis of the differences between. Enforcement of a law and the responsibility of a management group or management company to deal with that property. I will be asking another, another question about that though, because I think that's important for, um, thinking about like retail theft, retail crime. And things like that. So any other, any other questions from council members who have not asked a question yet? Councilman Rendroni.
I actually don't have a question. Thank you very much for putting this together. I know we talked a couple of days ago and it was great. I, um, echo what Linda, Councilmember Linda Aki stated with regards to. Beryan really does acknowledge, um, our police department and and they hold them in high regard. So thank you for that. Um, and I also do want to comment, um, I also took the police academy and it was awesome. So I highly recommend it.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chief Bo? Council Reiki.
Thank you. Okay, the other, um. It's kind of a three-part question, but it's all, so, um, it is in regards to the co-responders. Okay, so, um. I'm interested in understanding, uh, better exactly the duties of the co-responders, the expectation of those duties. And I understand that it's a co-responder and a police officer. The, uh, what it would take to get evening and weekend coverage? And what the cost is of each position of a co-responder?
I might look over my shoulder to ask, uh, a little bit of help from. From behind me for part of your question. Um. So start with the most basics. What a co-responder is is anytime you put two disciplines together to resolve a problem. So we have two different variants of co-responder here in the city. We have a firefighter E M T partnered with a mental health professional. Uh, and that's based out of the fire department and they serve all of fire district number two. So Normandy Park. Beryan and North High Line. We have a, a little bit of a piece of that with some of the funding component, and that's where I'll look over my shoulder for help in a moment. The second part we have is a detective in a car with a mental health professional and it's a contract with Sound. And those are King County deputies in a car together. We do currently have weekend coverage. We started with eight to six Monday through Thursday. No, Tuesday to Friday, and now we've added swing shift from Sunday. To Wednesday. So we have day shift and swing shift coverage every day, but Saturday, uh, and then there's some overlap with the fire as well. So that's kind of the coverage area that we have. As far as the responsibilities, they vary a little bit between police and fire, and I apologize, Chief Gaze is not here and I, I don't want to step on his toes with responsibilities specific to that. For police, they respond to calls for which there's an obvious nexus to mental health. Or there is something that needs additional resources, time or services beyond what a patrol officer normally will be able to deal with. The example that I used today and in a discussion, uh, one of our patrol officers was dealing with a twelve-year-old who had been using Molly, skipping school. And was being a twelve-year-old, just like my lovely daughters are sometimes and being difficult and police were called. And it was an example where the responding patrol officer makes a determination, crime, no crime. That, that, that's the fundamental determination of a police officer when they go to a call. It also was crystal clear that this was going to be a scenario that was going to continue to escalate over the next days, weeks and months, and we were going to be back there repeatedly. So the patrol officer went, determined no crime at the moment of. Called over the mental health professional co-responder car, and they still have the security component of the police officer there to maintain the family safety component. And the expertise of somebody who does the family counseling and really working through the resources with the young person to stabilize the young person. They then make those connections back to the schools. Counseling, treatment resources, other outreach providers. So often they become that kind of that bridge. Until they have a service provider in place to provide more long-term care. So it might be as simple as getting back connected to a structure like school. Kids skipping school, you get a kid back to a structure. When you put structure in a young person's life, they're less likely. To have the troubles that they're having when they don't have structure. So. Sometimes that's the extent of their connection is getting them back into school. Sometimes it's addiction-based. And it's connecting them to somebody who's an expert in addiction. So. They often make the connectivity piece. They don't do long-term case management. They do the connection. And I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but somewhere in the vicinity of eleven hundred calls for service. Your two police co-responders went to last year. So the eleven hundred calls for service for which they. Either were asked for help to come support, or they directly took a call for service that had a clear mental health component to the call. And went to it and took that call off of your traditional patrol resources.
I would just like to add to that, that, um, I'm a huge proponent of the co-responder model. I think it's fantastic. I've personally seen them respond to multiple scenarios, um. Throughout the city. Um, I'd just like to add so that you're aware too, uh. The city manager and I met with, uh, our representative in the U S House Representatives, Pramila Jai Paul. Where we advocated for funding for expanding this program. And getting more, more officers for specifically for co-responder model. Why am I having feedback? Specifically for a co-responder model to grow, um, the number we have in Beryan to from five for five to seven. So we're actively working on trying to get those resources because this model makes sense. It works, it's effective. And. I think that we should be doing all that we can to expand it here. Any other questions for the chief?
Yeah, one follow-up, I don't think I, I plugged is because that's a shared program managed out of Beryan, the service area for our co-responder includes North High Line. So it's. That is a North High Line program serving White Center Boulevard Park and the city of Beryan. But I don't think I clarified that they are broader than just the city.
I have a question about our I L A. With, uh, county, the county and the sheriff's department. Is there any benefit to reviewing that I L A? And considering changes that. Would improve Beryan's, uh, police department that might not be in that I L A. Or what would you need from us in order to? Consider changes to it or to ask for changes to it or to consider a new. Funding model or governance model?
Yes, I, so a couple of things. One is the, the I L A is, uh, provides for voice within the sheriff's office, to your city manager. Your finance director and your police chief. It does require that when we make changes, we make changes to the collective. So we can't do something good for Beryan that's not also mutually agreed upon by the other entities within the I L A. So. The contracting model is kind of standardized. The services can be à la carte, but the actual model is standardized. Which is both good and bad. Sometimes it does, uh, put some restrictors on. Beryan be able to do something completely independent of what the other twelve cities would want to do. But generally it allows some pretty good flexibility and and the, the showcase way to do. Changes is to put requests in through your city manager who attends the meetings. And then our city manager can advocate with the other city managers for different models, different changes, et cetera. We just did a review at the request of the cities of the model and pricing structure, uh, in the last year. And we as a city did an outside consultant review of our entire contract model in two thousand and eleven. So that's pretty stale. But Samamish and Sea-Tac both did a, a fresher outside analysis. I think they were all done by Burke Consulting, if I'm correct. And that was twenty eighteen-ish. Give or take twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Um, that did look in different places where, uh, cities can exert their influence and either should exert more influence or should leverage more resources. So that's, that's worth a read. I don't want to speak to their work, but it is worth a read as they did have some insights around. How to better utilize the contracting model from the position of cities.
Is that something that you would be open to us recommending consideration of to bring back recommendations for the city council to consider?
I feel a little uncomfortable taking the leadership role next. I think it's really something you would have to look at. There. If you want an independent consultant to review the contract, I. That, that would be an appropriate thing for a city to do.
I gotcha.
But that falls to the city manager guide.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Mayor, if I, I may add something, uh, just to contribute to the dialogue that exists between the Bureau of Police Department. The city, uh, as we shared with council in the past, had to hand with the oversight committee. We did, uh, work through an issue that we had earlier last year in regard to just staffing in general. Over all the contracts, uh, the sheriff's office understood that there was an issue. Uh, they properly worked with the city of Beryan and our other contract cities. To resolve the issue which increased our percentage of staffing, uh, within the Bureau of Police Department. To cause it, uh, cause it to increase considerably. So, uh, there is flexibility there whenever we do identify an issue. We do bring it to the chief and then also to the oversight committee, uh, but there could be ways to improve.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Councilman Ramada.
Chief, uh, thank you for spending an afternoon with us. You know, when I was the mayor of the city, I think the biggest issue we had at the time was gang violence, right? And, um. That's when Elizabeth Waters was shot. She was a thirty-year-old girl and a seventy-year-old, uh, young lady was shot. And last night we had another young person shot. And I want to, you know, give thanks to a couple of detectives and one of the detectives specifically Cueva. He's been, he's managed to save a lot of lives in the city and I don't think people really realize how impactful. So, you know, some of the deputies are for, uh, some of our children. And in fact, I got here to sit in the seat here. Eight years later, when I was there, when Elizabeth Waters was shot and moms and dads, brothers and sisters and kids were crying. And, uh, I was so happy and it brings me chills right now to see a, one of those young ladies that was lost at the time now in the Explorer Program. On top of that, um, you know, I've seen three of those kids that when I met them, they were thirteen years old. And yes, they were the ones that we were having to deal on the streets and, uh, you know, two of them are going to college. One of them is, uh, got into a building trades career. So, you know, as you said, and you started this conversation, we, we can't do this alone and we can't arrest ourselves out of this because. You know, there's some, some issues in our community now that we're starting to see again cropping up and it's just life cycles of crime. You know, people come out of prison system after they served four, three years. Come back and, you know, maybe there hasn't been reform, right? For me, I think it's important to continue, um, the road of making sure that we connect with those individuals. You know, I think that. This community, we're fifty-four thousand residents, forty-two percent. People that, you know, are different from different walks of life all over the world. And, uh, and it is twenty-five percent Hispanic. And so if that's the issue, and you know, I remember when I was dealing with the situation, somebody says, well. You know, yeah, it was Hispanic gangs and that's not racist to say. The question here is, okay, what tools do we have as a city? What tools do we have as, you know, law enforcement? You know, I see some of the graffiti, you know, and I. I've heard some residents that are, you know, upset about. I've heard some residents that are, you know, upset about it, but I think the question is, okay, so we can all be mad and, you know, throw a food fight and have a food fight of how we're gonna approach this. But the question is, what can we put in place? So right now, I know we have um. Cause you know, I gotta say, uh, gang graffiti. I'm of the mindset that it should be gone in forty-eight hours, forty-eight hours. And if our businesses. I know if they've, some of them have been hit more than one time, then we gotta figure out how we fund it as a city. Obviously, you know, and making sure that when that happens, that law enforcement's called because that does mean something. There's a code, there's a language there. And if our law enforcement doesn't document it, then we can't keep our streets safe. But if you drive by some of this graffiti. And you know, we were having that problem, uh, and you know, we, we pushed on the city manager at the time to be able to clean it up. Um, so. One of the things is the broken window effect, right? So if we have businesses with broken windows, we need to, we have, we can repair them. If we see graffiti, let's get it cleaned up. Um, and I, I want to thank you, city manager, cause I know that just for the audience to know this, that when weather's bad and it's raining and it's cold. You know, we can't expect uh, people to go out, you know, if, people that we contract with to remove that. But I think it's gonna be important for that. The other thing is. Building a relationship with law enforcement. I remember it was, it was very hard when you came on board and you've done a great job. As the executive, you know, head of the police department or city and making sure that you build that trust. Not only with who you reflect, but also in the community that you don't reflect. And so, that's why there's a lot of moms, a lot of dads who. Uh, give me a call and always talk about uh, Detective Cueva. And I just want to thank him from the bottom of my heart, cause I know that. He's made an impact in the city and you've made an impact in the city. Think as we move forward here is, how can we not stop uh. You know, pointing fingers and look at, okay, who do we have as uh, we have a lot of specialists in this town. I don't know if you have a multifaceted uh. Board of, of advisors, cause you know, we have novels here, we have C-Mar here, we have, you know, the emergency room here and. You know, I like a place with an emergency room. I've used the emergency room like twice in my lifetime with my daughter. That I didn't have to be worried of having to drive through downtown and the traffic that we had an emergency room here, but there is side effects of an emergency room. And so uh, I just wanted to hear from you with, you know, who do you. Besides arresting, because I think what's happened, uh, you know, as you said, we can't arrest ourselves from it, but we've kind of dumped the police work and we've now. It goes to the emergency room with doctors and nurses, right? And I've talked to them there. And so like, nobody, I mean, I think it has to be a multifaceted approach. And I know that there's. Uh, units that drive around. Um, and so I'm just kind of wondering what other tools do we have in the town that you're using when it comes for to. You know, people suffering from mental health. You know, I've, I've seen some people say, well, what are you gonna do there? Look, you see this person? Yeah, I see him. But this is the United States of America. We have a constitution. If it protects you, we should protect that person. They're not, they're not, they're not, you know, they're not having a crime. They're an episode, a mental health episode. And then the other one is, yes, that person looks like, yeah, they're high. I just can't tell you that they are because I don't know. And so I'm wondering, when we see those kind of crises, is what are the steps that law enforcement uses?
Yeah, I want to start out with something you said is really interesting. Um. When it comes to crimes, it's okay to say that we need to hold people accountable for behaviors. And it's also okay to say that it looks different in different situations. The police officer's job is to hold people accountable for the behaviors, to take an action when somebody commits a crime. What happens after that sometimes is about what accomplishes the best long-term solution. Uh, and we have a lot of systems, both in who we partner with, uh, in the immediacy. Um, as far as referring cases, referring people to different resources. And then the court comes in, our work at SCORE, and I think Director Schrum was in here to talk. Not that long ago about some of the programs at SCORE. So really kind of looking holistically at how do we have accountability for behaviors, but also combine that with. The most effective outcomes in the long run. Um, and this is where it's interesting to have a public safety discussion with your police chief. And not to have a public safety discussion with a table full of people, because I, I will tell you that this is not a police-centric. Thing when we start talking about how do we deal with people in crisis. Uh, it's how do we engage our schools? How do we engage our church communities? How do we engage outrage? How do we engage? Uh, programs that we're funding partially through our human services funds. How are all those things coming together? Um, I do want to say that one of the things that's come out of the work over the last three or four months in Buryan. Uh, has been that we now meet on a weekly basis. Weekly, by the, we're doing bi-weekly now, right? Every two weeks. Um, so we bring all the providers that we've worked with uh, on the implementation uh, discussions. And we, all those providers still meet every two weeks because they want to meet every two weeks to try to figure out how do we deal with some of these complex problems in Buryan. So. I, I think it's a constant ongoing conversation. Um, I agree with everything uh, Councilmember Ramada said. There's an overuse of the medical system. Uh, sometimes it's easier to send people off to the hospital and have them come back four seconds later because it, it's a triage network. As opposed to long-term solutions. I think there's some broader discussions that also are outside my scope around. Um, really having some drop-in centers across King County. And having a place for law enforcement to take people in crisis that is more effective and more appropriate than dropping them at. Uh, dropping them off in the hospital, uh, where there's a fundamental conflict of sick, not sick is really what we should be determining at the hospital, not necessarily. Somebody who has other mental health or other behavioral health issues that need to be addressed. Um, so I really feel like this conversation could grow into a. Really a, a very thorough discussion around all of the resources that would need to be at the table and, and to be transparent. I'm not the expert on a lot of this. I'm. Rather the guy who calls in, the person who's at the expert and sits at the table. And I know there's a couple. Sitting in the audience now and I'm sure listening at home, there are people that I rely on. I, I'm not an expert on housing. I, I'm not. It's, it's not my expertise, but, but I know there's people that I can call. And then I have to trust and rely on their SME advice within subject matter expert advice within that, that sphere, cause I don't know the answer. Um, so I think a lot of my work is, is also about that. How do we bring people together into a room and, and try to figure out who needs to be at the table? Who needs to be on the ground doing the work and how do we need to connect to those? Um. I hope that's a really long answer to a really long question. I hope we hit both ends of it. Thank you, sir.
Other questions?
I had one of my.
Comes from Reiki.
Just the one on estimated cost of co-responder position.
And I am gonna rely on one of those subject matter experts, Anya, behind me, cause she's the one that's doing all the numbers for that. Is that okay?
Hi, we've been fortunate to have a really great partnership with Sound, uh, our provider for the MHPs. Uh, that ride along with both our fire and police co-response programs. Uh, both of those contracts right now are active till the end of twenty twenty-six. Uh, they're, for both positions, uh, the MHPs come at roughly a hundred thousand dollars a year. Uh, plus some additional costs for supervision. All three of the MHPs that ride in co-response programs are supervised by a clinical supervisor. Uh, he's wonderful. Um, so they have an opportunity to debrief and work separately with a mental health supervisor. And then there's some administrative costs is associated with the contract as well. You can, uh, sorry, I look at these contracts all the time. So, uh, no, it's about a hundred thousand dollars roughly. If for personnel and benefits. Um, obviously we want to accommodate changes. These are hard jobs and we want to be able to accommodate. Salary growth and whatnot, but that's where we're at.
Thank you. Any other direct questions? Okay, oh, good.
Chief, but uh, I, I have this question to ask, right? So if you see that somebody's suffering from a mental health, health episode, right? So wh- why can't you just use involuntary commitment, right? Why doesn't our police officer, why don't our chief just, you know, get out there and do an involuntary commitment? What does the law say about that?
Right, so the law says that somebody has to be uh, in a moment of being in immediate danger to themselves, somebody else gravely disabled. Or uh, an immediate threat to damage of property. And those things are defined in a, a pretty specific and tight way. So. Gravely disabled is not somebody not making good decisions for themselves, or it's not somebody having a bad day. It's somebody who their death is imminent, should we not have emergency medical intervention? Right? So oftentimes when an officer deals with somebody, they are clearly having a behavioral health issue. They clearly need help and they haven't yet met that threshold. So the threshold of dangers to others is not what. Is defined as our comfort level around people who have mental health issues. It, it's. They are actually about to and imminently going to hurt somebody. So. Defining those is why often law enforcement can't take immediate action and the action that is taken has to be service providers doing relational work with the person in the field. Cause there's not currently the ability to use ITA or, or for the officer to take away their freedoms. And for all practical persons, hold them against their will at the hospital for up to seventy-two hours, which is the process you're talking about is where law enforcement can actually take away somebody's freedoms and temporarily hold them for an emergency matter. Uh, mental health evaluation. Um, that is very limited scope and we do have to meet those thresholds. Uh, otherwise the person is, is free to live their life uh, in their. State of consciousness such that maybe.
So why wouldn't that be considered disorderly conduct?
Good, depending on the circumstances. Disorderly conduct is also pretty clearly defined. Uh, so they have to meet the statutory requirement for disorderly conduct and then we could take action on disorderly conduct. Um, and then you start getting to the discussion. I, I, I don't want to overly mix these, cause somebody who is not committing a crime. Because they have a mental health, there, there's a fine line there that is, is not a hundred percent clearly defined. Um. Somebody has to be willfully committing a crime. Somebody has to be consciously committing a crime. Um, so there is, there is a little bit of a muddy water where you're at right now that uh, saying somebody who is. In a mental health crisis. Is disorderly, therefore we're gonna throw them in jail is, is probably not a, what I would call a just outcome, nor is it probably a righteous or constitutional outcome.
Cause we're still protected under disability act, under the, the constitution. I mean, so if, so I would have rights as somebody with a disability. Is there, is there something that kind of goes down that rabbit hole, I guess you would say, because, you know, I think this is a. And I know some of it's your question, you know, as law enforcement, and I would probably have to ask that of a mental health, you know, whether it's a doctor or a psychologist. Because I think this is, this is where the, you know, the, the, the water does get muddy, right? Cause you know, I think that the immediate response is if you're seeing something going on, why is it that you can't do it, right? Like. Maybe somebody urinating or somebody, you know, using drugs. So the question you've just said here today is, if you as an officer don't see somebody using drugs. You can't use my word for it. So I can't do a citizen's arrest.
And, and I want to be clear, some of these issues are so complex that I will sit down with our city attorney. And we'll dialogue over a cup of coffee for an hour, debating the merits of some of these cases. And, and what we're asking is a twenty-three-year-old kid pushing a patrol car around to make that determination in five minutes is probably not a fair expectation of law enforcement. And I, I think part of my job is to set expectations as well that uh. When we have to sit around and debate and discuss. The finer points of the law for an extended period of time, and even then we aren't a hundred percent crystal clear where we land. Remember, part of supporting our officers is our core, is clear direction, clear understanding. We, we have to be fair to people that that might not always be a fair place to draw the line. So, um. Thank you.
David Mayor.
I just have a comment. Um, I want to acknowledge something that you said earlier, which is, it's okay to say. That we want to hold someone accountable to their actions and that can look very different to different people. Um. As someone that has two kids with special needs, um, that really, that really sunk in my heart and um. That's why I'm such a huge fan of the co-response and I acknowledge that having them has been a huge help and I can know. As my kids are getting older and becoming adults, oh my god. Um, that they'll be okay with that and I, you know, something with Kevin said earlier. That we would love to expand on this and how can we do that? So I just love that you acknowledge that it can, you know, how we hold someone accountable can look very different to different people's abilities. Um, and what they're going through. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Go ahead.
Okay, um. What is the status of the sheriff's department's work on um, recruiting more officers? Are you getting some more officers coming in? Um, what does that kind of look like and what can the expectations be? For future officers joining the Buryan Police Department?
Sure. So at the highest, King County Sheriff's Office was a hundred and fifteen commissioned officers short of what were budgeted for. Uh, that was at the end of last year. I think it was at October-ish, is that correct, City Manager? I think it was October-ish. We hit our peak at a hundred and fifteen. Uh, we currently are at seventy-nine officers short of. So a lot of forward progress is being made. Um, a lot of really creative and effective recruiting is going on. Uh, we're doing mentoring programs. So when people want to get into the profession, we're catching them earlier and assigning them to an officer to mentor. Which also builds the relationship that hopefully will help them come work for us instead of work for somebody else. Um, as y'all are aware from previous contacts, several of the officers that currently work in Buryan. Are young people that we engaged with as police explorers. They're young people that we engaged with years ago. So. Recruiting is actually about that lifetime relationship to help young people see a career of service. Uh, and it's not necessarily like you have a. A one-time thing at a job fair and you make somebody a, a cop. Rather, it's about finding amazing human beings who want to do this work and want to serve their community. And then we teach them how to be a police officer, right? You, you hire the right people. And you can teach them the skills to do the job. And that's the way I view it. That's the way the sheriff views it. Uh, our sheriff has done a very big push in thirty for thirty. Um, which is about expanding uh, the diversity of the sheriff's office to make sure thirty percent of our officers. Uh, are women by twenty thirty. That is a push that uh, she is very strong on, is really recruiting. Uh, in that realm, uh, as well as recruiting really anywhere we can find amazing human beings. So. I, I love the recognition uh, that I've actually heard from the council uh, several times about some of these people who come up and. We have explorers that are getting hired in police jobs. These, these are young kids that in some cases, we first met them. At the scene of a shooting eight, ten years ago and we mentored those kids for years. And now we find these young people have cleaned their life up and are actually coming into service to their community and giving back and. Um, you know, we can't expect young people to be perfect. What, what we have to expect is that young people, when they live through these experiences. Come out better at the other end. And a lot of that is about everybody in this room, not just those of us, everybody. Uh, giving that network to young people to help them make good decisions and process through those bad moments and move forward. So I, I think that is where you recruit people with a heart of service. Is by helping them see that uh, throughout their whole life, not just judging a moment in time, but rather looking at a human being and trying to bring them back.
Thank you. Okay, um, let's do, let's come back at seven thirty at the tables here. Couple minute break for water and other. Okay, um, let's do, let's come back at seven thirty at the tables here. Couple minute break for water and other things. Okay, we're back. We are back. Okay. Oh, Linda, you're all by yourself.
Yeah, I'll, I'll join.
Okay, cool.
I am running this.
Linda. Ah, ah, ah. Mm-hmm. Um. So, all right, so we heard some uh great answers and um responses from the chief about some current issues. Um, I'd like to open it up to discussion. I think there's some action, actions we can take tonight, some recommendations we can make. To the city staff um to return back to us to uh make some decisions on. Um, I know I'm going to be making one recommendation myself. Later, but this is a great oppor- this is the opportunity to bring up the topic of which you'd like to make a recommendation. So if anyone would like to start that, if not, I could start with mine. Okay, want me to? Okay, so um. My, my recommendation deals with the ILA with the sheriff's department in King County. Um, we heard from the chief and from the city manager that other communities have reexamined their ILA and have taken it to the. Partner cities to ask for improvements and changes because we have to get agreement on that. But I'd like to see if there's support uh to direct the city manager to um. Uh, begin explorations on ways we can improve our ILA with, with the county and the sheriff's department.
Do we thumbs up or do you?
Well, let's, let's talk about that. Like if people have something they want to say, but um we can wait until everyone said something about that.
Okay, I mean, um, yeah, it seems that this LA, ILA has been in existence since two thousand and one. And that we haven't, maybe the most recent reviews were by other cities in twenty eighteen. So it seems to me like this is a good time for us to review what is within the ILA. And since we have new city council people like myself as well, I'd be interested in, you know, better understanding that and receiving that information of, you know. Where we're at with the ILA, where our relationship is with um King County Sheriff's Department. Especially as we're moving forward towards um hiring new officers and how those officers are distributed and. Um, uh, what our expectations are and all of that. So I'm supportive of um. Having staff review that and share that information with us.
Great, thank you. Any other thoughts on that? Only if you want to share. If not, we can move into a thumbs up, support for it or not. Go ahead, Governor.
So you're just saying to have it read in between each other? Or is that just for the city manager to read it with, or turn, I'm sure they read it and then make recommendation of what they believe should be changed?
Right, or like what they were talking about with the city of Samamish went through a consultant review process and then requested changes. So I think there's improvements to be made, certainly improvements to be made. Um, so I just want to see, is there thumbs up support for, or do you have another comment?
Yeah, I just, um, I'm not sure if I'm supportive of hiring a consultant to do that work per se. Um, reviewing the existing documents and a uh discussions with our police department. Chief and things like that, but I'm concerned about a cost of.
Well, the chief, so the chief said that the other communities hired a consultant group to look into it. And sometimes you have to. To do that kind of thing. Yeah, Councilor.
Well, I would say that, I mean, unless our city manager, this one and our prior one and our city attorney have been asleep at the wheel and they haven't seen what the change in there. I mean, because they've put in recommendations a while back. So for me, it depends what we want, right? So if we're going to change the contract, then it would be a consultant saying, okay, well, what do we want? Well, how are they dealing with? Mental health illness on the street? How are they dealing with homelessness? How are they dealing with, you know, uh, drug seizures? I mean, we may have the best, you know, police force and the best contract out there. I mean, we don't know unless we hire someone that is able to, because you know.
Review.
To do a review.
Yeah.
That, that's what I would say. Thank you.
Any other thoughts? Okay, is there support for doing that? Do you got that, got that direction? Okay, great. Okay, well, that was my, that was my main recommendation that I wanted to take away from this, from this conversation. I want to, I do want to echo. Support that's been laid on the city of Buryan Police, like truly, I think the reputation of the Buryan Police is, is high in the community. Um, I still need to do my ride along for this half of the year. I try to do two a year. Um, for new folks on council, uh, I'd recommend, I'd recommend doing it. It's um. A pretty, it's a pretty interesting experience. Um, and I've, and I've actually developed some, some great relationships with officers from doing it. Um, so I'd highly recommend taking advantage of the opportunity to do a ride along. And I think any community member can do it too, right, chief? Okay. So folks can email in and see if it's possible. There you go, Community Police. All right, another, another plug for the Community Police Academy. Okay. Thanks, chief. So council members, though, you should definitely check it out. All right, any other um council members with recommendations or uh hopes and suggestions?
Yes, um, so one of the things that I've been talking quite a bit about is um. Uh, data accountability, um, information, uh, actual outcomes from the service providers that we're utilizing. Um, especially to make sure that uh funding that we're using from taxpayer dollars. Are being effective in what we're trying to accomplish. And we have struggled with being able to have some of that happen with the existing service providers. And in this case, I'm specifically talking about Reach. We've been unable, um. I've been told by city staff to obtain the kind of data um that we are seeking. Um, on any sort of basis at this point. I think that we've had this contract in place long enough and we've done enough requests from Reach to be able to receive that information. Uh, since the beginning of the implementation of their contract. And without having that additional data, I just am really leery of continuing with that particular contract.
Could I ask the city manager some questions about, about that contract? What is the total, what is the total uh cost of the Reach contract?
We'll ask our uh Human Services Division for a little help, but uh, but I think off the top of my head, it's roughly about. A hundred and thirty thousand per year for a remaining of two years. So the total amount is roughly about two hundred and fifty left.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, any comments or questions or thoughts on, on that? Councilor, go ahead.
I, I guess my main comments are, we are witness to what's happening in and around our downtown core. Um, and we have yet to see visible improvements. Um, where I struggle with is the Reach Department. Um, I understand that this department has been in play for now well over a year. They're supposed to be contracting out to help the homeless, working with businesses. And I, as a core business here in our uh community or downtown area. I couldn't honestly tell you what this person looked like. I've not seen this person and from what I hear, nor have I heard from others that this person has been present. And so I would like to reevaluate and end the contract for Reach. And direct the city manager to look at other options for us.
For the funds that.
For the funds that Reach, that are out and reallocate the funds for Reach.
Okay. Other thoughts or questions, Councilor?
Well, I, I think if, you know, I'd like to, before we move in the direction of dismantling a, a contract or. A service provider, like to see, yeah, what is it that is expected and, and has that been met? Um, and I know that Lead and Reach work together. And I don't know which one does what, but I can tell you that I remember the story because. You know, somebody uh was at my son's house with my uh, with his girlfriend. And so this individual was cleaning, was acting kind of strange, but it, he, he was cleaning. And so I talked to one of the detectives and one of the detectives said, you know, um, he's been part of the lead program. He's part of, you know, there's been reach outreach to him. You know, he's been clean for several weeks. And so it's pretty interesting that. This individual deputy understood that this guy was doing the best he could to get off his drugs. So then I went and talked to him. Told me he wasn't doing anything. What, so what are you doing here? Well, I'm cleaning because I want to make extra money. I want to be able to work. I don't know if there's a work program that's missing in the component because I know that he'd been clean. I go, well, I was told that you haven't been using drugs. He goes, yeah, I haven't. I said, well, what happened to your hand? Because I noticed his hand was gone. Said he'd blown it up on Fourth of July. I said, well, where's your mom? And we started talking as a young person. And so what ended up happening is the individual. You know, uh, was trying to manage it. I don't know what happened to him, but I can tell you that that's the first time that I heard it, that it come out of his mouth. He's part of the lead program. And so, you know, I, I would like to see some success stories, right? Uh, I can tell you that success story because, you know, I heard the story from the individual. But I don't, you know, it's been a while since we've hea- heard reports and I think it's been a lot because of COVID, but I would like to, you know, have them come out and. Yeah, what is it that you've done? How have you managed to deal with people that you're having to see on the, on the streets? Because that's what our community members are seeing it. And the question is, okay, how are you dealing with it? So, thank you.
Thank you. I think a way to frame it for the city manager would be to um re- request the city manager bring back a um. A presentation and discussion on Reach at the, at a, at a regular meeting. And then take direction from that regular meeting to the same manager, so that there's time to present that information. And at a regular meeting, make that direction. Because right now we can say to him, you know, this is what we want to see and this is what we want to have back. Um, but then make the final determination at a regular scheduled meeting. Does that, does that sound good?
Yeah, and I uh recognize that there is this difference um with like Lead, which is funded through King County. And Reach, which we fund directly from the city of Buryan and that they work together and understanding that. I'm also really excited about the coordinated efforts that are happening um by monthly. Did I get that right? Um, with the coordinated service providers. I think that's very exciting and um glad to see that happening. What I'm continually concerned about is just this lack of. Uh, data and information that we're receiving from this provider. And that we make sure that whatever funds we have um from taxpayers that we are utilizing those in the best way possible.
Okay, any, go ahead, Councilor.
Just if I would add, if we can get the contract that's signed with Reach to figure out what the deliverables are. Uh, because it's been a while since I've read that contract and I don't remember what the deliverables are. Because I think question here is, are they meeting the deliverables? Because that's what I'm hearing here, that there may not be deliverables being met. And if not, then is there another institution, organization or. A group out there that would be able to have these deliverables come back, so.
Yeah, so that sounds, that's a great, a great addition to the recommendation for a regular business meeting. Absolutely. Anything additional to that request? Okay, can I see a thumbs up for support for that? Okay, thumbs up for support for that for next regular meeting. Um, I want to touch on something else that was brought up uh during the discussion of um.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
If I may, uh, council, if we could ask, we're not a, a specific uh meeting because it may take us some time.
No, we'll do it. Yeah, we'll figure that out.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Um. Uh, to touch on this issue with what the police chief um presented around enforcement of eight-one-eight. I think, and I think you brought it up, Councilmember Aki, about evening service providers. Um, uh, understanding. Similar, similarly to what you were brought, bringing up about deliverables, understanding about what the, what the system is in place for evening service providers and. What we might be lacking um uh in our, in our service providing network. For, for evening across the city, not just the downtown core, but um the, the whole geographic zone of the city. Um, and whether the city of Buryan might not have that capacity. Potentially our neighboring communities might and what we can, what we can potentially look for in partnerships there. Um, because a lot of people in South Buryan don't even know they live in Buryan. They think they live in Normandy Park or Des Moines. A lot of people in. Northeast Buryan, Bolvard Park area, I think they, a lot of people think they live in Taquilla um or Seattle. So um. We're, working on figuring out where the gaps are in our evening service provisions. And then addressing those concerns. So um, I think that can be tied in with the request with Reach because the potentiality of a reallocation of money to something else that can meet those needs. So that's not, that's not an ask for thumbs, it's just a statement of, we can incorporate that into that conversation.
Yeah, and I would add weekend to that as well.
Oh, evening and weekend, yeah. Okay. Any, any other recommendations, considerations, Deputy Mayor Moore?
Um, I was just hoping that this conversation would lead us into another conversation in the future of what providers we do have, what exactly corresponders do, what Reach is supposed to or does do and what Lead does. I know we had that conversation maybe last year, I think so. I think it'd be helpful if we had it again. And that might spark some other, maybe new ideas, or maybe we can circle back on what has happened this year. What can we change? What can we add?
Councilmember?
Well, I think the gravity and the seriousness of the situation we find ourselves, not only in King County and Burian, but across the nation when it comes to, you know, an epidemic of drugs and mental health and the ability to be able to have institutions to be able to help. I mean, there's no secret that, you know, Washington is struggling with people that suffer from mental health. And then, then you have the people that are unhoused, which, you know, is, you know, you can't pigeonhole all of them that they're, you know, that that's the reason that they're homeless. But I do believe that it may be a summit, maybe this summer or the next couple of months. With, we have some great providers in the city, you know, we have Mary's Place here, we have San Friscus Hospital here. We have Novos here, we have Seymour that has mental health specialists and drug addiction counselors. We have Mary's Place and Hospitality House. So we have a lot of providers and maybe it is a summit that we, where we bring in business people and we bring ourselves in. And, and we have a summit in Burian. What is it that they're offering already in Burian as providers in the city? Not only for the city, but for the region, one. Two, is it something that we've been, should be advocating our federal lobbyists and, and state lobbyists? I'm figuring out that anytime you have an emergency room or a nine one one facility where, I mean, where nine one one can take you to an emergency room, should we have so, a place that's in, in patient care at Francisca's? Can we partner up with, you know, Francisca's Hospital and figure out, is that something that they either have space or could have space, right? But I think something that, because I'll tell you, you know, it's, it's interesting in the way the chief said it. And in my mind, I said, yeah, you're right. Like, you're not a doctor, you know, you're not a nurse. You're not a mental health specialist. I mean, you're a cop, you're supposed to go get the, you know, the criminals, the people that are killing people in the streets, dealing drugs on our streets. Mass massacres, I mean, that's what he should be doing and, and our law enforcement. But then again, we got to rely on those providers and figure out, okay, maybe we're not, you know, the, the school district. And so I just think that if maybe we have a, I don't know what we call it, Public Safety Health Summit or something where, you know, we actually have it in our city. So that would help for ideas and just have that conversation. Thank you.
No, I appreciate that. And we're, we're kind of building the foundations to do that. The city manager and the human services manager and myself are reaching out to all those organizations to have meetings with them throughout the next couple of months. And I think that can build into something like this, where we, where we bring everybody together and say, where are we missing some components here? Because I think that's the biggest, that's the biggest thing is the scarcity of resources of not just the city, but nonprofits, non-governmental organizations, where do we need to fill those holes that the city might not be able to fill due to a lack of resources or due to a limitation of resources that nonprofits or non-governmental group or hospital or something like that can fill through more investments? So we're building up to that. I'm excited about the next couple of months of meetings with those groups. That I think we can, we can learn a lot about ways they can, they can work with us. Councilmember Aki?
Yes, I, I agree. I mean, we need to be bringing these, the organizations that are actively involved in being able to help in all of these different areas together. That's why I was excited that they're, that Colleen is really starting to work on that. Thank you again. Also, I wanted to mention that tomorrow night is the DEC Public Comment Meeting at Novos. And I'm going to attend it, you know, it's open to the public as far as I know. So I wanted to put that out there as well because they're going to become a partner in the community that we want to be able to make sure is safe and effective and, you know, a good community resource for us as we move forward. So that's just another piece of the puzzle.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Moore?
No, I just had an idea. I remember when my family struggled with an issue in the school district. Someone from the school told us that there was, and oh, I don't even know if I'm saying this right, an ombudsman that we can address or talk to who can address our issues and then talk to the school. And that lady was amazing. She helped us get the services we needed that we didn't even know we had qualified for. And I'm wondering if maybe that is something that we can discuss potentially having as far as having these providers here. That sounds like sometimes maybe they're not providing services. Is that something maybe that the city can have that even the public can talk to and say, hey, I've called this person to come and help me address this issue. Person hasn't shown up. Can you help me make sure the city is actually getting the services that they're paying for? I don't know if that would be something that we can further discuss.
I think that can be in injunction, in conjunction with what Councilmember Motta was saying, but also in our conversation around funds and around Reach too. So I think that can be paired together. Any other recommendations or thoughts to add to our council calendar?
Mr. Mayor, if I may add, just a point of information to, to share with you and council. We, as staff, recognize that sometimes there are these instances where people don't know how to access services. For example, the ombudsman position does exist within our zoning codes. Unfortunately, we just, due to lack of resources, are unable to fund that position within our housing inspection coordinator program. So we do value that, that position. We have discussed internally how to potentially have a developer, business concierge, which helps people who are building, developing new homes within Burian to actually walk them through the process. And in this instance, exactly what council member or Deputy Mayor Moore is saying, having a potential ombudsman as part of a potential restructure long term, could help people access more services. So we do have, within our records, I just want to point out, we do have, again, that, that foresight of needing to help hold people's hands through the process. It's just due to resources that we haven't been able to fill these positions, so.
Thank you.
Just on that conversation there, Deputy Mayor Moore, because, you know, I remember that we had a friend who ended up having schizophrenia at a later age in her, in her life. And it was hard that day, you know, I, I tried, I called everywhere. The husband didn't want me to call the police. So I called Seymour, I called the, I mean, the emergency room. I finally called nine one one. And it didn't turn out, I wanted it to turn out because obviously she was having a mental health episode. So yeah, she got slammed by the police officer. The husband was upset at me for life. I mean, to this time, he doesn't talk to me because he felt that I called the police when I told him, look, everything's going to be okay. Like, we need to get help for your wife. The school had called because they thought the kids were in danger. And so, you know, when I look back at it, you know, and even to this day, I couldn't answer. If I see somebody having a mental health spell, what do I do? Well, I, nine one one, right? So I, I do believe that maybe if we start having that conversation with the providers, that I'm sure that we're not the first ones dealing with this. But we do have some, like for instance, Novos, they have people that suffer from drug addiction and some mental health that have, that, that are residents. And, you know, we've been able to, well, at the time, work with the businesses, so you get to know who's living there, right? But as DESC is coming in, I think it's even important also to figure out, okay, what can we do? Because these are some episodes here and they're already dealing with county issues and we're lucky to have them in our backyard, so.
And to highlight that, it's not, it's not only DESC, but Habitat for Humanity coming online, EcoThrive soon. We fast-tracked permitting for Mercy Housing. The amount of housing we have coming online, that's market rate and affordable, attainable and affordable. I mean, it's, we're, we're doing, we're doing a lot. Yeah, connect, connect them online.
Low income housing, I mean, for some low income people.
Absolutely. Okay, any other recommendations or, this feels weird because it's eight o'clock. And normally I would say like, that's early for a city council meeting, but we started at six, so this feels weird, but I don't mind it.
I think it feels good.
I know, I, I know. Okay, any other recommendations or considerations for direction to the city staff that we will discuss at agenda setting for a future meeting? Councilmember?
So I have one and it would be the graffiti, you know, I've been thinking about this because, you know, establishing a rapid response for graffiti removal. I don't know if we already have a team or team formation, training, right? What is it? Reporting system? Response time, you know, the goal that I've asked is for forty eight hours. Also working with the businesses, I know there's some businesses that get pissed off about it because, you know, they've gotten hit more than one time. And, and, you know, we, we need to be able to work with them. And then figure out at the end of the year, like, you know, first a public awareness campaign, you know, running about, okay, we're, you know, a volunteer program if there is one. I know Discover Burian has cleaned the streets and I've participated in that before. And then the other one, you know, we have, not a lot of cities have somebody that works with plants and trees, right, arborist. And we have somebody on staff and it'd be nice to figure out, if you know that wall's getting hit, you know, it's been hit, getting hit since, you know, nineteen ninety. And it has dirt right there, why can't you plant a plant? It'll help us with oxygen and it'll help us with cleaning up the environment and making sure that it becomes a beautiful plant on the side of the wall, I mean. And so I've seen that, right? So, and we already have an arborist and the question is, okay, what kind of plant can I go buy to do that? I mean, I'll go buy some for, you know, a business, some, you know, kind of those kind of programs. And I know we've talked about it, I know we have that going on with our, our garbage, what is it? Recology, but you know, I still see that there is some private property that, you know, we're going to have to jump on it. Because I do believe that if, if the concept is or the conversation, yep, it's dangerous in Burian. Look, they got graffiti everywhere. And then all of a sudden you bring somebody that you want to eat here because we got some great restaurants, they see the graffiti, it's like, yes, I heard that on the news, right? So it's, the question is, how can we, you know, beautify the city with volunteer efforts? And then also with maybe allocating some funds on that.
I know we have, I know there's an element of code enforcement that deals with graffiti removal. But I do think it's a important opportunity to discuss if that portion of code enforcement needs more support, more resources. I have seen a increase of graffiti. Not just, not, not just in the downtown core, but as you go along Ambaum and DeMoss Memorial up in Boulevard Park, there is a, there is an increase in graffiti. And I would definitely be in support of having us have a conversation with the staff about what resources might be available or what we might need to work on to help code enforcement, create a volunteer program, something around arborists. So definitely, is there other support from council on that, Councilmember Aki?
I am supportive of that. I do know that there's also been some funding from the Economic Development Department that is also still available to businesses as they can get financial assistance for that. So, you know, I know we've got the recology program and, you know, that, that support, you know, from those from the Economic Development Department. But I recognize that there could be more that can be done, maybe in developing a real volunteer program of students or young people maybe that want to become involved with something like that or something like that. So I'd be interested in getting some more information on what kind of support services we could develop.
Okay, any, go ahead, Councilmember.
Well, just like I was saying with the Reach and the Lead Program, you know, there is some individuals that have tried, I've, I've, I've heard of, you know, have cleaned themselves up. But the question is, okay, so what kind of program do they have? I know that King County is going to start a cleaning program where they would use people that are in house and they would have a stipend or certain dollar volume. Because that's where you start, you know, somebody starts getting there on time, they start learning responsibility. At some point you start saying, hey, well, maybe I can't, it can work for me, right? So maybe exploring something like that as well. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Moore?
I just had a comment as far as the volunteer for graffiti. When I asked this question, wow, has it been two years already, about volunteering for graffiti removal? I was warned very strongly against myself removing gang graffiti. So a volunteer group would probably need security of some sort, would be my only thing. Please don't just go out and do something on your own without security.
Hey, this is Councilmember Sarah. Didn't think you knew I was here. And I tried raising my hand and if you didn't see me, you were going to look at my hand.
Hi there.
So I just arrived, I have no, I, I have not been keeping up. Hi.
Hi, um, we are discussing public safety recommendations that council members would have that they would like to see the city staff or the police department or the human services department discuss recommendations for. So if you have anything, we can, we're, right now, we're discussing uh, sending a recommendation to the city staff for a, a faster graffiti removal process. And we just had a couple of comments on that, so that's where we're at.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Maybe I'll listen for a couple of minutes and then.
Okay, alright, so, Councilmember Motta has proposed directing the staff to look into our graffiti removal program. I su- I support it. Are there thumbs up or hands up or supports? Okay. That's, that's thumbs for that as a potential future item of consideration. Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember.
I know that in BDP, we were talking about how the graffiti is a, is a big issue. I know that they were allocating funds to do fifteen, but they were then discussing lowering the quantity to down, down to ten. But heavy hit areas, painting a big mural, getting a local artist to do something there so that way that heavy hit area isn't repeatedly hit. So I know that they were allocating funds for that.
That was BDP money?
BDP.
Oh, it was ARPA money, right, 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 okay, okay. Yeah, okay, I think, well, I think it's important.
And I know that they were allocating, they were thinking about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be allocated towards that.
Councilmember?
This is not something I probably want on the agenda yet, because I'm sure I'm going to see if I don't have any, anybody with food in the back of me. Tomatoes, but you know, I, I do, I do have a problem with having empty buildings in our city. And, you know, I, I know that, you know, we, my, I had a relative's house catch fire and they've been trying to figure out what they're going to do and they keep on figuring it out. Well, they ended up getting a, a fine or, you know, we can't have your building empty in Seattle. And guess what? It's moving pretty fast and they're going to fix that place up. So sometimes I do believe that there is some individuals that sometimes need to, you know, maybe decisions need to be made for them. Because there's some of these buildings end up just becoming a place where you start having crime around it. You start having graffiti and so it's something just to think about, not that I'm asking to put it on the.
Well, I don't know, that's something, that's something that I, we talked about years ago, years ago too. I like the idea a lot. So here's, so here's the, the, the topic of discussion here. So prolonged vacant residential and commercial spaces have historically been places where, where they're then magnets of, you know, of different sorts of all kinds, right? And different cities have instituted different policies to address emptiness of spaces. I think it's, it's a viable goal because we want to incentivize economic activity of all sorts. And I feel, I personally feel that if a commercial building is being left dormant for years, it is a, it is not an optimal use of that property. And we need to incentivize ownership of that property to change, to invest in, to fix, to improve. One of the tools is a vacancy tax, which I think is what you didn't want to say. I'm, 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 I'm perfectly comfortable talking about a vacancy tax because I think it's a great idea. A no tomato, I'd be hit now, now I'd be hit with them. But I think some sort of incentive for empty property or dilapidating property or property that has clearly not been used or lived in or had any kind of activity in for years is a problem. And I think that we can think about ways to deal with empty properties, empty commercial spaces, empty. Empty properties, empty commercial spaces, empty residential spaces, um, so I don't know, I. I'm perfectly comfortable having us discuss that right now and say it could be something in the future, but are there, are there other thoughts? Okay, Sarah, Councilmember Sarah. Do you have any thoughts on that topic?
On, on empty buildings?
Yes.
Um, I, I guess I have, my thought is on empty and also underutilized buildings that, um. We see, we see a lot in Boulevard Park that there's businesses that kind of come and go, or we don't know what the business is, or. It's, it's not, the, the hours are very sporadic or. Um, it, and it, it, I think ma- creates a, a perception that there's. It empty or otherwise oddly used space there.
Yeah, and I think there's some, there's actually some prominent properties in the city that come to mind when people think of spaces that have been empty or underutilized for years. For me, the one that comes to mind the most is the property at the very end of a hundred and fifty second at Des Moines Memorial. That's on a weird little, that's on a weird little plot of land. And when I was a kid, it was a grocery store and then it became a laundromat and then it was an upholstery place and. Now it's nothing and I think that like, we, we need, we need to, we need to incentivize folks to invest in and improve their properties, so. Any other thoughts or comments before I ask for support for, for that? Okay, great, thumbs up for support for that? Okay, well, you have thumbs, we have thumbs for that discussion as well, which is a great one and I'm glad that Councilmember Motta brought it up. Yeah, one more, this is why we're here.
This is great, um. Uh, had, I have recently seen uh, presentations regarding SEPTED. Um, SEPTED being the, um, I, I forget what the acronym is for right now, but essentially it is. What businesses can be doing to make their um, properties uh, safer. Um, having the windows opened up so you don't have um, things so much in it that you can't see in it. Uh, lighting is a big one, um, additional lighting, expanded lighting that can prevent crime in those areas. And other kinds of things to be doing within um, uh, city business core areas. Um, to improve uh, or lessen crime in those areas, um. I know that the E D P has been working on this and maybe bringing a presentation forward uh, in the future, but I do think that. Um, some of the things centered around lighting uh, has been discussed and things like that, so. I think that it's important, there are things that we can do uh, following these guidelines put through by SEPTED. Uh, that we may be able to do for the future and I'm just bringing it up as. Uh, another way for us to be able to improve safety and security um, in areas.
I'm gonna say, let's have that conversation when we talk about the public safety levy. Because when we have the public safety levy up and bring it to voters, we're gonna be asking voters to approve. An increase to the sales tax to fund certain elements of public safety. And we're talking about a lot of, a lot of different types of public safety and I just looked up SEPTED cr- crime. Crime improvement through environmental design.
Yes, and um, B E D P may already be setting aside funds or they were thinking about it. So I'm not, or Economic Development Department, maybe. Do you?
I don't remember specifically B E D P, but I do remember Chief Bo having mentioned something like that.
Yeah, B E D P had um, presentations on it from Washington Retail Association. So just a heads up, they melt, they may already have funding thoughts about it.
Well, that's fine, but for our conversation with it, let's, let's hold the bigger conversation around that for the public safety levy. Sarah has her hand up, Councilmember Sarah.
Yeah, and, and I haven't been here, so I don't know what direction the conversation's gone in, but has there been discussion about pedestrian safety? And particularly about driving speeds on different residential streets.
Not enough conversation, Councilmember Sarah, would you like to bring up?
Well, I, I, yeah, I would like to bring up that there have been hit and run pedestrian fatalities um, around in Burian. And that, that doesn't always get talked about as a public safety issue, but of course it is. Um, it has to do with, with several things, one is just driving speed and the other is lighting and a third is. Um, narrowness or availability or lack of sidewalks and I think that I'd like. You know, I hear when it happens, but I don't know what the data is about where the most dangerous places are, or where the, the most. Uh, possibility of improvement would be for that and that's something I'm interested in as public safety.
I think that's a great consideration, we had a couple of commenters tonight who brought up um. Uh, pedestrian safety and hit and runs especially around schools, um, and I think that that is a. Important conversation, especially as we're finishing our comprehensive plan. And especially as we're, um, one of the things, uh, Councilmember Sarah, that we, um. That we did talk a little bit about earlier was the, was the relationship between. Private property and public resources. And I think that kind of comes into it too, just depending on, you know, are you on a sidewalk, are you, are you walking in the middle of the, some, some, th- those kind of considerations, so. Um. Is there, is there an idea of kind of a direction where a recommendation could go? Do you have that? Do you have an idea of that sort of where you think you'd wanna direct uh, the city staff on exploring this?
I, I think the first thing I'd like to know would be what, what the numbers are and what, what's happening, you know, how. Are, are there most dangerous places, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Uh, we have been requested to have speed bumps and I, I have heard all kinds of things, all of them. A little bit word of mouth about why we don't have them and, and I'd like to know a little more about that as well.
Okay, any other thoughts or comments on this topic before we see if there's support? Councilor Motta.
I was just, uh, cuz I'd like to identify crime, heat spots along with pedestrian unfriendly. Areas and what investments we can do in those areas, right? Cuz I think if it's public safety, it would be okay, what? Okay, i- 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 if it's because it's not a sidewalk, it's not lighted up, then obviously it's gonna bring crime in on top of it, you know, um. There's been fatalities in those areas, so it would be identifying uh, crime heat spots and pedestrian non-friendly. Areas to where we can figure out if there's anything through public works or through our law enforcement or through. Um, our, our, uh, uh, services, uh. Uh, to figure out what can we do to make it stronger in that area to start helping clean it up.
Great. Councilor Reiki.
Um, I have had uh, several people um, approach, residents approached me about. Concerns they have on a hundred and fifty second, particularly in Old Burian, but in the downtown core as well with speeding. And I guess my, um, my question is around uh, what areas of the city we see speeding um, in. You know, these high residential areas, um, maybe centered around where uh, these pedestrian. Um, accidents have been occurring possibly or something like that, I guess, I don't know what parts of the city have the highest speeders in them. It's, it's all over. Only one that drives twenty miles an hour here.
Well, I think, I think we're gonna, you know, we'll ask, we'll ask, I think this is a, a good idea and a good um, consideration to make, so. Uh, any other comments before we do a thumbs up for support? Okay, is there thumbs up for support? Okay, thumbs up for support on that as a future item as well. Anything else?
Excuse me.
Yes. Gordon, hello.
Just making sure, uh, I did share some information earlier that the port is having a re-insulation. Uh, meeting tomorrow that's open to the community, people are able to kind of. Point out different concerns and issues that they're having concerning insulation or the need to have insulation redone. Uh, it is tomorrow and I believe it's also, it's a meeting that's available by teams. So just making sure that if there are groups or people that you're aware of who have this as an issue. This would be helpful to perhaps share with them so that they can speak out on it.
Okay. You know what we don't do, but I'm gonna do right now, I'm gonna say, is there anything for the good of the order? Is there anything for the good of the order?
This would be on the same kind of mind thought of, I would call it public safety cuz you know, there, there are things where. Uh, they come in, they're remodeling a home because they wanna make a quick turnaround with money and they end up, uh. You know, not replacing the insulation with the right insulation on the, underneath the flight path, I've seen that quite a bit, or they remove the windows when it's supposed to be. Three uh, pane windows, it's one and, and uh, so that homeowner doesn't know, they buy the property and then it, if, so if anybody, I'll, 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 I'll be at them. I'm trying to be at that meeting, but I think it's a, this is gonna be something that's very important for the city and for our residents underneath the flight path with more. Uh, development and then also figuring, asking questions, is there uh, up, you know, if you buy a house, where do you go to make sure that it was? Right, you know, that they put the right windows, the right insulation, you know, and so I think those would be questions for the port, so I appreciate that uh, city attorney for bringing that up. Um, because I think it's important.
Yep.
I was just gonna mention, um, King County does have a weatherization program for low income families. Um, I don't know if everyone is aware of that, um, but that program is available and. Please take advantage of it if, you know, I know, um, Washington is a. High humidity area and um, a lot of houses that I've lived in weren't fully insulated. Um, and that can be disastrous, so if you have that issue, you should take advantage of the program.
Also for retirees or people that are fixed incomes that are retired, there's actually a program in King County as well.
Anything else for the good of the order?
Um. So there was an instant, uh, there was talk about sidewalks and people that aren't housed and obviously our. Ordinance says that if we have no shelters, then we have. They have the ability to stay on sidewalks, I mean, that's just why we ended up passing it cuz we couldn't get a shelter put in place in Burian at the time, a fun one. Um, but we also, you know, we, we have the day shelter conversation we're still gonna have and. The other thing is, uh, cuz we do still have ARPA monies as, eh, knowing the situation we're in, is there services out there where. Uh, people are able to find um, uh, rooms, I know that King County had a program like that. And I don't know if it's something that we can offer individuals that are out here. Um, I don't know if there's still stipends for that, um, I don't know if, you know, we, we allocate our money for that, uh, instead of a shelter, then, then. Cuz at some point, the residents in that building, I mean, obviously they're concerned and we heard it today and it's something I just wanna bring up as. A conversation because, um, under the, I mean, there's nothing really we can do right now under the ordinance, other than. You know, offering, if it's not this, then it's this, right? And so that's our own ordinance says that, but I just thought, think it's a topic of conversation, I don't have any solutions for it. But um, I think it is something that we have to have a discussion around again.
Well, and one thing, um, one of the things I was gonna bring up at the good of the order too, but I think this is a good addition to that, one thing that I wanted to bring up with us. For our next regular meeting is a discussion of um, requesting our Human Services Commission. To look into recommendations around partnering with nonprofits for shelter capacity. And what, what nonprofits need in order to expand shelter capacity in the city of Burian. Cuz I think that's a bigger conversation than just us talking about it, we need, we need some research and study about that. For what folks need in order to expand shelter capacity. Um, cuz I'm for, I'm for housing, I'm for housing, market rate, affordable housing. Shelter space that is um, within the type of requirements we'd like to see in the city of Burian, so for me, that's. Ensuring that it's a safe place and ensuring that there's no drugs or alcohol or weapons in shelter, shelter space. Um, but we need to know what nonprofits are willing to partner with us on that. Um, so one of the things I'm gonna bring up at our next regular meeting is if there's support for having the Human Services Commission to look into that. And then bring us back recommendations, but that's, that's not something I wanna talk about right now, that's just something I'm letting you know that I'm gonna bring up at our next, at our next regular meeting. Deputy Mayor Mora.
Um, so there is a booklet, it's called the Emerald City Resource Guide uh, by Real Change and they did a really good job of putting all resources that are available to people. Um, within King County as far as I know, it might be, um, it might expand further than that. Um, but this might be something that I don't know if maybe our police officers have on hand that they can hand out to people. When they encounter someone that might need resources, um, I know the booklets are printed on a limited base. Um, I got my hands on one and it's super useful, I didn't know there was nearly as many shelters as there were listed on here. And it also tells you where you can get hygiene kits, where you can get showers, dental care, things like that. Um, so if we're able to hopefully maybe bring that up and get our hands on, you know, maybe a stack of them or. Emerald City Resource Guide, Real Change. Um, and they do have an online version too, that will, might be good to talk about or have or offer to people.
Great. Councilor Andrade.
I think that's a great resource guide, um, I'm glad you brought that up, I think if anything, that would be something beneficial for our M H P provider. That's heading out there, handing them out, um, that's something that I didn't know existed either.
Any other gals for the good of the order?
Councilmember Mora has her hand up.
Councilmember Mora.
Yeah, just um, hearing Deputy Mayor Mora and Councilmember Andrade talk about that, just makes me want to hear from our service providers, what. Basically what their toolkit is, um, do, are they, because I, I, I hear that and I think, I don't know, maybe they're already. U- using this booklet, but I, I don't know, so kind of learning more about what our service providers.
Are, and that's, and that's great, we're gonna be having that conversation in March.
Super.
Yeah. I have one last thing for the good of the order, I want everybody to know that I've signed in pro on House Bill twenty-two fifty-two. Which would allow for the establishment of small businesses in residential zones, specifically coffee shops. And it's a bipartisan bill that is uh, brought to the legislature by a representative from Walla Walla. Um, because if you've been to Walla Walla, you know that place is super cool and has wine shops everywhere. Um, and as a, as a community that prides Burian, not Walla Walla, but I'm sure they do too, but as a community that prides themselves on. Small businesses, but specifically hospitality, uh, food-based businesses. Places to have, bring people in to be a destination for dining, um. We also have success in our uh, ordinances around um. Allowing for historic businesses to operate in residential zones already, so the three tree point um, store. Operates within the ordinance around historic businesses that can operate in residential areas, we already do this for historic businesses. So how cool would it be if we were able to allow someone to open up a coffee shop in. One or all of eighteen neighborhoods in the city of Burian, I think that would be very cool, so I've signed in pro to House Bill twenty-two fifty-two. Uh, it's been moved out of the House and into the Senate, I'm hoping that it gets a quick, a quick vote in the Senate of support. Um, and we can start, we can start um, working to permit those and zone those in twenty twenty-five, so if you wanna take a look at that, look into it, it's pretty awesome. Um, that's just something I wanted to let everybody know. Okay. We are adjourned at eight twenty-three.